For which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let's bow our heads and act to the prayer. Our dear heavenly father, we just thank you for another day. We thank you for the opportunity to be leaders. We just ask that you give us the wisdom as well as our department heads who are also leaders, give us the wisdom. And keep us in a humble attitude as, as we deal with the citizens of this county. Lord, we just ask that, as always, we're able to do the right thing at the right time. And lord, help us to be patient and wait on your divine intervention to make things work the way it needs to work. In behalf of the lord, we ask this note your name, amen.
Should have received the minutes from the October twenty first meeting. Any comments, questions, or concerns regarding those? Motion by Stan, second by Doug, that motion passes. Minister approved, I'll pass them then if you'd say to the guys. Tony, what have you got for us today? It's like you have a lot. First off.
Good me back from Michigan City of Conference. Sorry you have to deal with me instead of Angie, who I'm sure did a wonderful job.
Did a great job.
And I.
Glad to have you back.
I wanted to note that I'm, I'm proud to represent Adams County on the slate of state officers again. And the legislative committee as well. So, you guys want to throw that out there?
Appreciate you representing Adams County and appreciate the work you do for.
I am the training officer. Which is an officer position that. Basically make sure that all the auditors in the state are trained properly in various things, new things that come along and things like that. Okay. Weekly health insurance claims. Those are in the amount of thirty six thousand nine twenty five thirty nine. And of that amount, we have medical at sixty four thousand eight twenty seven oh nine. Prescription twenty six nine forty five thirty six. And then you have some carry forward credit and some refund that totaled fifty four eight forty seven oh six. Which leaves that total of thirty six nine twenty five thirty nine.
That's pretty good credit.
And I verified the claimants.
I move we accept the recommendation of thirty six nine twenty five on our health allied weekly.
Motion made by Doug, seconded by Stan, that motion passes.
And here's that if you wanted to look on the second page for the. Next, you should have received the accounts payable claims. And those are in the amount of two hundred fifty nine thousand six eighty seven ninety seven. Those are the accounts payable claims.
I have no questions from my seat.
Yeah, I think a motion we approve the claims that's presented.
By Stan, seconded by Doug.
Then we have payroll AP claims, and as you know, when we go through these, that is the benefits and so forth. That the employees receive and, and what the county pays. And that is in the amount of three hundred forty nine thousand seven thirty six thirty one, three forty nine seven thirty six thirty one.
I think motion we approve the payroll claims that's presented.
Those are all of the fringe benefit amount?
It's, it's the, yes, it's the benefits that we, and it should be listed on those pages beyond.
Like withholdings and.
It's a, it's a, it's the extra besides the payroll. That's how much the county pays for the employees for benefits.
There's a good reason, those kind of figures is a good reason that, uh, normally speaking, we don't have a difficult time finding county employees. They appreciate the fringe benefit package that's provided. So, did, did you make a motion, Stan?
Yes.
Okay, did I second it? I do now.
You did.
I did, second.
Motion made by Stan, seconded by Doug, that motion passes.
Okay, I handed out to you gentlemen prior to the meeting. The utilities paid in law, I also had a copy of the twenty twenty four versus twenty twenty five payment, which I don't think was very far off. I know you like to see those comparisons. The amount of utilities paid in law that I would like approved is thirty one thousand six hundred ninety dollars and ten cents. Thirty one six ninety ten.
Move that we pay utilities as listed.
Second. Motion made by Doug, seconded by Stan, that motion passes. It's approved.
Let's go through this while I'm doing my thing, right? We have a couple of N-series transfers. Normally transfers. Will go for counsel, but these are commissioner lines and they're in series. Counsel doesn't need approval, but it's your guys' money. And we wanted to explain why we are transferring. And if you're looking at the one, and we'll need motion on this when we get done. We received, uh, more than normal, uh, Baker and Tilly charges. As a matter of fact, I think they raised their fees on some things because, uh, the hospital also got charged. Fifteen hundred dollars more on what they normally do. So that's part of it. It's an increase to Baker and Tilly, and we pay, uh, pay that out of fees and penalties. We pay for, uh, reviewing, the reviewing, the property tax replacement, local income tax. If you remember, they came to counsel, Jason Simler came to counsel. That didn't cost anything, but they asked him to look up information on the property tax information. And I told him at the time at that meeting, I said, now you realize this isn't costing you anything with him here now. But if you ask him to do this, it's going to be a charge. And this was the charge for that. Uh, we have disclosure reporting, uh, on all of the bonds that we have and so forth. They monitor the building corporation. They do all this stuff involving any bonds that we have. And that it, that it was just higher this time around. Uh, we also made a note that next year, when you do your budget, we might want to increase a couple of lines to cover these, these increases. So anyway, that is what the fund transfer. From one thousand three seven two zero 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 six eight fees and penalties. We're increasing that and we're taking it from bond custodial fees of six thousand and legal fees and services from sixty two hundred. I think we put on there, last year you ended in legal fees with an extra fifty some thousand dollars. We don't, we expect that you'll end up with plenty left in there. So, that shouldn't be a problem. And if you would like to approve that, I just need, uh, uh, Steve to sign it after you approve it.
You retain a motion to make that transfer?
What? Hold on dude, you know what I'll do? I'll copy this and I'll give you my belief.
I, I moved that we accept the, uh, recommendation from our auditor to, uh, fund the transfers.
So what, what ended up being the, the total Baker Tilly charge, did you say for that? Was it the sixty two hundred?
It was, let me look.
Or, or was it the?
Probably a twelve.
I think it was like two thousand and something.
So that was only claimed for that review.
Yeah, there were other.
Cause there's four claims for Baker Tilly, I just wondered.
And that was the extra one. You normally get three. That was the reason there were four. But then there's also payments made out of that same fund. Uh, the treasurer's office will spring the ball taxes and other things that it just ran short because Baker Tilly raised their fees. And we had that one extra.
We're asking, you're asking for a twelve thousand two hundred dollar transfer.
Uh, I'm asking whatever that was is that Steve has in front of him.
Twelve thousand two hundred dollars.
Okay, that's the mo, that's the motion that I made.
Yeah, I'll, I'll second that, I just.
Hey, motion by Doug, seconded by Stan.
You should have all the documentation with that, that I handed to you, the whole packet.
Yeah.
And the next, the next transfer is dues and subscriptions. We want to take a hundred dollars from utilities and put a hundred dollars in dues and subscriptions. I'm trying to think, let me look in the paper to see. What it was exactly that. And I think that again might be. Just some, some unexpected costs that, that increased that we weren't aware of for that hundred dollars. But I'm glad it's just a hundred dollars. Dues and subscriptions. Oh, I know what it is. The twos and subscriptions is for your guys' conferences, is what I wondered. Because in the past, I don't know that we ever had all three go.
Right.
I know, I've not gone before, so. So that, that's, that's the reason for the second transfer. If I could get an approval on, on the hundred dollar transfer. Uh, I have that one here to be signed, and that, that's what it was.
Conference registration.
I made motion.
Yeah, so move.
I'll second.
We might want to look also at increasing that in next year's budget as well. I don't know if.
You already got next year's budget submitted, don't we?
Well.
Twenty seven?
I'm talking the following budget after that. Okay, thank you. And that is all that I have at the moment.
Nate, have your report here. Come on up and help us understand what's happening.
Nope, a couple of updates for you. Uh, the CCMG applications for those two projects have both been submitted and accepted by Endon for their consideration. Again, I, Endon has not announced the schedule as far as when they plan to make any award announcements, so by now we're just in the waiting game on those.
So if they accepted, that doesn't mean it's true.
Correct. They just, they have them, it's on file, so everything is in and then appropriately to my knowledge, so we'll just. See what they do with the new schedule and the new selection, so obviously it'll be more competitive, so. I've got my fingers crossed, but that's about the best I can do at this point, so. Updates for you as far as the current active projects, Bridge Forty Four, that's along Two Hundred West, just south of Two Twenty Four. I was at that job site this morning. They are pouring concrete now. They may actually be done with the concrete board, doing some finish work on it. Asphalt searches to that bridge are scheduled for November fourth and fifth. So they should be doing that one of those two days, then the roadway would be open once we know that the asphalt has had a chance to cure. Uh, it's only about three, two to three inches.
Is it like a reinforced?
It is just a high density concrete overlay, so it's a rigid deck overlay. So, they've got a very rough surface on the bottom, so it's just a thick skin go over the top of the existing bridge deck.
Okay.
So.
Nor, normally how, normally what's. How, how, at what point do you no longer accept any asphalt just like that?
Uh, really, if I can get asphalt right up to about Thanksgiving. Once the plants will, the plants will start shutting down, once we're consistently below freezing. Um, they need to be placing that asphalt when it's forty degrees in the rising.
So November four, five, not in the.
Yeah, November four, fifth's not really a problem. I really want to have those jobs done by about first of November, so here we are, just three days into that. We, so, after November fifteenth, it's really just a gamble, so you don't know, but, uh, yeah. We need to get that in and the, as soon as we got seven day strength on that concrete is when we're going to finish up that asphalt, so. No, that's a good question and certainly something we'll be watching as far as weather when they plan on placing them. Um, Bridge Sixty Six, that's the concrete on that bridge was poured on Friday, so the twenty four. We're going to keep that closed until the Thursday to allow that to cure, get about seven day strength on it, so.
Oh, you're mentioning that, just brings to mind the, the one east of Geneva where there were some buggy tracks across the. Did that all come out okay then?
Yep, they got that one opened up. It didn't leave any, any noticeable damage to the bridge. We just, we saw it in the gravel as they were pouring it, so. Once they pulled the forms off.
Sorry I interrupted, I just.
No, that's, yeah, so there was no noticeable damage on that bridge. That was Bridge One Fifty Five.
So somebody drove through with what, Savannah?
Um, actually just like three day old concrete.
He had pictures of, you might have been on, you might have been on a fishing trip.
Yeah, so it, it poured the concrete on Friday, uh, early Friday, and then sometime on Sunday night, likely, they drove over the forms. And jumped it across the bridge and ran across the bridge anyway through the job site. Pulled a, pulled a skid loader bucket out of the way to make room to get through, so. But yeah, you know, I, kind of a rough road and a rough ride for them, I imagine. But thankfully, there was no permanent damage to that bridge when they had done that, thankfully. But yeah, just an update for you on that one. Once we've got strength on Bridge Sixty Six concrete, then we'll open that back up to traffic. And that is on Three Hundred North between One Hundred and Two Hundred West. Um, then next item for Bridge Seventy Three, uh, had spoken with Milestone Construction. They're scheduled to perform some patchwork for us, so they're going to remove some concrete on that deck that has been laminated. And then do selective patching of that concrete. Uh, they're going to start the week of November tenth. Since there's no asphalt with that work, they could do that in colder temperatures, so, and I'm anticipating about a seven to ten day closure duration for that. We're going to give that, once the concrete's poured, it'll be about a week of cure time for that.
Is that one of them, you found the bad concrete with your chains?
Yep, so we went out and chained some decks, and this was one of the ones that had, uh, quite a bit of patching that needs to be done on it, so, yep. And that's on Salem Road between Two Hundred and Two Fifty North. So there'll be a little bit of a disruption from schools, but thankfully it's only a short period, so about a week, week and a half. Uh, then lastly, just a little update, some good news on Bridge One Eighty, that's the one that crossed eight twenty five and six fifty. Or eight twenty five south, six fifty west. Uh, finally had a chance to go through the final invoices with the contractor on that job site. And, uh, we're certainly underbid on some of the quantities, so at the end of the day, the county's going to save a little over ten percent on that project. So, we were able to reuse some of the aggregate that was around the existing pipes for some of the fill work. So there's significant reductions in aggregate stone, some of the lean concrete. We were able to make adjustments in the elevation of the leveling pads, so that was eliminated, so significant quantities.
What, some of those changes discovered by you going on site, or did Judy realize the, the way to?
It was a combination of both. I mean, I was able to make some design decisions in the field with Judy as far as what we were going to deal with. Once we had opened the site up, we found where the rock elevations were across it, made adjustments to the structure, so. There's no purpose in trying to dig out a foot of existing rock to try to push the structure down, so we made adjustments, the leveling pad. Uh, some of it was just site conditions were different, so one of the, the soil, the soil tech elevation said that there's an eighteen inch difference in the rock. Between one side of the next, and either you needed to fill one side of the concrete or you needed to dig the rock out on the other, so. And it wasn't that case, so it was more level and uniform, so we made a couple of adjustments there. And then when we found the additional stone, or existing stone, there's a lot of good backfill that we were able to salvage, so they had offered it. I was willing to accept that, saying, this is good stone, yeah, we're going to use that rather.
Very good.
Buy more stuff on the back end, so, no, that worked out very well, and having a good contractor, being on site, it was a, it was a win-win for us. So certainly want to take advantage of that when we can. Yes, this was a community crossings project, but because of the match money that was there. Every dollar that we saved actually just stays in that Q break front, so that was a very win for it, so we'll take credit when we get wins like that.
Well, to be able to make job site changes and decisions like that would obviously be valuable.
Absolutely. Appreciate the chance to do that, and so that's, that's good news for us. Um, any questions for me?
I have none.
Any, um, I know this in your, in your work, but do you know what the schedule is on thirty three for the, where they've got thirty three shut down between, uh, twenty seven and? On twenty four?
I don't. So.
Okay.
Nope, so I'll go with what Brad said, it's December, so. Good deal, thank you.
Thanks Nate. Come on up Brad. I know that sure has sent a lot of truck traffic through Monroe.
It's definitely increased, and it's interesting as part of, uh, my update this morning. I don't know if you've noticed there on Three Hundred North, on the east side of twenty seven, you gentlemen remember how that neck down really narrow? And we are widening that, and this was also part of, I'm talking to Brooks when we did the other Three Hundred North. That, uh, when they get time, they're going to come back, and we're only doing like, maybe five, six hundred feet where the road gets back out again. But we're going to widen that and hoping to get them in here to pave that yet, so yeah. So anyhow, the crews are out there working and they said, you wouldn't believe the amount of traffic that's trying to turn down that road, so.
Yeah, that's, uh, I heard about that.
Yeah, yeah.
People trying to get bypassed that, thirty three's shut down.
Yep.
Get work or whatever.
Oh, I guess better do this first. I heard you talk about it. The other thing too, I'll just give you an update on quick, we are also working on Five Hundred South. Between Two Hundred East and Three Hundred East out there in the muck ground, that has moved, last year ready, patched it and. Uh, still moving some, so we're going to mill on some of it up, we're going to build it up and shoot it again.
Is that a pretty good sized area?
Yeah, it's, and it's, it's there again, it's just the one side of the road, but it's.
So the road's not closed?
Yeah, it's closed. Yeah, cause we're milling it up with our machine and it's about six hundred feet probably.
Good shot, yeah.
All right, we received our monthly draw. For MVH October, our typical draw was three hundred nineteen thousand, seven hundred and eighteen dollars and thirty five cents. Three hundred nineteen thousand, seven hundred and eighteen dollars and thirty five cents. And on the other side. The local road street draw for October. Fifty two thousand, two hundred and twenty three dollars and seventy seven cents. Fifty two thousand, two hundred and twenty three dollars and seventy seven cents.
There's slight increases at least.
Yeah, yep. That's interesting, I was thinking about that, if you look, like you gentlemen have observed before, if you look back through the other year, it's still pretty consistent.
So, uh, I move that we accept the MVH local roads and streets, uh, report is given.
I'll second that.
Motion passes.
Basically, the only other thing I kind of informed last week, finishing mowing this week, getting one finished in the last round. Going back over some of the main roads, make sure those are down, um, to help when that stuff flies in the air. Keep that down, um, and like I said, finishing these few road projects. And then we will move on to, uh, brimming the edges of roads and that kind of stuff, so, other than that.
Very good. Where, where are you brimming in? Down south, or you?
A lot more will be south this year because more of our, we're trying to firm all of our chipso roads for next year. So more of it's south this year. And then once we get those done, then we'll go to other roads if we know we need it.
I won't have so many calls from my neighbors.
You'll be, you should be good this year.
As winter approaches, um, probably need a review of the codes and, and all that kind of stuff, so.
Figure here in a couple meetings, we'll.
Yeah, I figured you'd, you'd be on top of it, okay, thanks.
All right, thanks.
Thanks Brad.
Building maintenance Rick is not going to be with us this morning, if I'm not mistaken. Um, Bob, you're up. Come on up with your group and tell us what, what's happening. You have a whole entourage here today? Come on up guys.
Okay, you go through, let, let's have some introductions here, so just for my review.
Absolutely. Morning gentlemen, Caleb Hall, morning lippa is, uh, one of our navigators inside and outside of the jail.
My navigator, you mean?
So he is helping inside and bridging the gaps when people get out, helping them connect with all the different resources, relationships and opportunities. Caleb is definitely a go-to for us in the reentry side. Uh, Sarah DeRosa is our program manager at the jail, so she oversees the actual programming inside ACB.
A couple of years ago, when we did a judicial study, one of the things that showed up is, uh, uh, something we didn't have. That would be a definite benefit was a jail navigator. You know, this is good to see.
Sure. So if you guys, if you have the opportunity to look through what I sent this morning, navigation is a pretty big part, you know, that's my professional background. So navigation is a big tool that we use, we've done, we've done digital. Uh, programming without navigation is only going to go so far. You can give people the education, but when they need access to relationships, resources, and new opportunities. To grow a different life, so that's a bit of our focus.
Rob, how many, how many, how many navigators? You just have one or other?
This is it right now, we have a, we have an open spot right now that we, where we could hire somebody, I want to get past them first. So that's what we'd be looking to, but part of it is, um, male and female. Doesn't, we've had to figure out the balance because the female navigator is not a full-time, we don't have as many females, we have men. So we're still trying to figure out how do we keep the caseloads mostly men with a male navigator, mostly women with a female navigator, without having a full-time. A female navigator, but also not putting all the programs on and already being a program manager, so we're, we're working it out, it's worked so far.
You work exclusively with folks in or coming out of Adams County Ten Shit Set?
Or prison, coming back to Adams County.
Okay.
As well.
And before we get too involved, could you explain a little bit how your funding, where your funding comes from and? How much it is approximately?
So our operating budget is around two hundred fifty thousand dollars a year. We've received half of that. Last year, we've received half of that from the opioid dollars. And we, I raised half of that myself. So that was fifty fifty down the middle on share. We've done some other fundraising indirectly, um, but that's been the bulk of our funding.
And, and the opiate funds, they're still in effect for several years to come, is that correct?
I don't have a, I, yes, and I think we were expecting.
Touched on that, opiate funds. They're out there for what, did you say twenty, thirty eight or something? Okay.
I'll speak, I'll speak for a lot of us to say we're, we're hoping that there's several more opioid symptoms coming down the pipeline. I think that we haven't seen even the tip of the iceberg quite yet.
And I, I gave you gentlemen the amount of restricted and unrestricted as we are sitting here today, current.
Yeah, okay. Okay, go ahead, I'm sorry.
Uh, did everyone get a chance to look over what I'd sent this morning? No problem, I've got it broken down and talked once, if you'd like me to go through, I can.
If you don't mind, Rob, much good. I did, I did breeze through it, but it was kind of what another meeting was going on, and so I don't know how much I can comprehend it.
So, before we jump in, I want to, I want to draw just a little bit of a clarifier. You're going to see the word assistance throughout this document. And the word that you're probably used to is recidivism. So I'm just going to read the definition real shortly, so you can understand why we chose one or the other. Recidivism is the tendency of conviction in criminals to reoffend. Pretty, pretty simple definition. So what we've, what we like to use is desistance. Desistance means. The act or process of ceasing, especially from criminal or antisocial behavior. So it doesn't only gauge whether or not you were rearrested. We know a lot of people who haven't been rearrested who are miserable now. So the recidivism, it, I, we don't feel like that's the right measure, so what we're actually measuring is a whole lot of things. Are you holding down a job? Are you taking care of your kids? Are you staying out of jail? Are you going to recovery meetings? Like there is a, dozens of things that we're looking at, is, instead of just whether or not they're returning. So just to recap, a year ago, we decided, uh, the county decided to, to, uh, to, to go with this local model through Project Connect. And we, we moved away from more of the, uh, you know, the, the original state funded, the state-led process. We had some hiccups along the way. Uh, I think, we feel like part of what has been a good decision now is it's kept it accountable, it's kept good collaboration. It's built with local partners as a, as opposed to us caking mark, marshmallows from elsewhere. So I think we've been able to be really focused on the interests of Adams County, um, and what works for us and our people. Uh, so I'm going to, I'm going to jump into the fiscal rationale, because I, I think that's the bulk of like what, what we probably want to talk about today. But I definitely want you, you to understand what we've been up to for the last year, and so we've got some numbers in here that we can talk about and some different things. The, the state model would have closed, cost us close to a half a million dollars a year, and although it was free for year one. We would have given, we would have taken on some of that all the way up until year three, at which time we would have been responsible for the whole kingdom. So we would have gotten it for free at first, but built ourselves into where we had to pay for it. And then also had, had a certain way that we would have had to do it. What we did was we paid. And then also had, had a certain way that we would have had to do it. What we did was we paid for in-house, knowing that was the long haul anyway. We raised half of the money and then we built an initiative that we feel like works specifically for us right now. Um, so I, I'd, I'd love to, I'll let the sheriff speak for himself, but I, I feel like we've created a product. And we've marketed it a way of doing things within the jail that I, I think creates great collaboration. It strengthens the jail and it's helping people. At the end of the day, if we're not doing that, what are we doing? I have the same, I don't wanna jump ahead, but I have the same environment this year from the community, so I have again raised enough for half the budget this year. We would ask is the same return as last year for the county is to match up those dollars and let us do year two. Um, I know that at some point, somebody is probably gonna say, well, we can't do one twenty-five year forever. Totally agree. Um, well, our intention would be, and you'll see this in here, is that this year, one of our, one of our focuses is to, is to figure out some of the sustainability pieces. So the year one was all about, let's do the work, let's figure out what we're doing, let's, and then we'll start tracking some data and creating sustainability in year two. So that's what we would hope to do this coming year is track the data. We need a full year to really start to track that well. And we would really like to start thinking about sustainability. We have good, some good ideas on that, but no real, nothing I could really share.
Well, one, one of the things that I remember when you were in here a few months ago, I remember how long ago that's been. You know, and I asked you about your budget and you were projecting a budget of between three and three hundred and fifty thousand dollars. So obviously, your budget has been much more manageable now from what you had projected earlier, so that's.
So I'll just say, our budget is three hundred fifty thousand dollars a year. The jail and prison reentry portion of Project Connect is two hundred fifty thousand dollars a year. So there's a residual, there's a residual benefit of the county. The Project Connect is doing some other things that benefits us as well, but the county's not paying for it. And that's a great segue, but one of the things that we picked up was the contract for wraparound services for underserved housing. That would include Village Green, that would include um, Chase Point. Uh, so we've got, we all the way into Geneva, that Limber loss. So like, so the county's not paying for any of that, but we're using the same model using the jail to serve those, those people as well. And there, I would say there is significant overlap, especially with Chase Point in jail. It's a similar population of people.
Yeah, and as far as, you know, we've had discussions with the opioid money and how we wanna handle that this year and I. And I, I guess I'm leaning towards, and I don't know if you guys are, you know, following the recommendation of the J-RAC committee on, on, on how to distribute.
When does year two officially begin?
January.
January. And uh, the hundred and twenty-five thousand that basically you're asking for the county, is that primarily opiate money? Is that what we're talking about here?
So last year, we did it this way as well. Okay. So we came in last year and I, I made the pitch and the county kind of made the decision. It wasn't traditional as far as like going through the same tracks as most people went through, through uh, J-RAC. So I would still hope for that same recommendation from them, but I don't think there's enough in the current released dollars to foot the bill. So we need to look, I think my understanding is we need to look at the under, the unrestricted funds.
Doug, I don't know last year, if you were here when the sheriff and Sam and Ian and Rob were all here discussing IRACs. But IRACs. The county was not, Sam, what's the wording I'm looking for? We weren't eligible for IRACs. Correct? But IRACs was going to get that hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. Because they couldn't, because it wasn't eligible. Project Connect and Rob came to see if the money that was geared to IRACs could be given to them. For their jail reentry program, which is something similar than what IRACs would do anyway. So that was the reasoning for that. Ian, do you have any further explanation besides that as to opioid monies and J-RAC and the process?
I'm just looking at balances and the figures and I, I don't think that the. At least the restricted fund is gonna sustain. That ongoing support, uh, especially if um. You've already, you've already said a few weeks ago that you were going to allocate a hundred thousand dollars out of that fund. For this current cycle that we're preparing for. At some point, it's gonna run out and, and you're only looking at receiving. Combined the restricted and unrestricted. About forty thousand dollars. Next year. So just kind of give you a heads up of where that fund is. You know, I know that there, obviously the J-RAC committee's gonna make a recommendation before this some point. Um, but I know there are other agencies that are preparing to ask for uh, grants as well, so just keep that in mind.
Okay, real quickly, uh, identify who's on the J-RAC committee.
Community Corrections and Advisory Board plus uh, Jenny Broderick from Park Center. It's, I mean prosecutor, the judges, the sheriff, myself, the chief probation officer, uh, Stan, uh, Fred. And uh, John from the council, um, Dr. Smith, uh, Almar from Behavioral Health. Uh, Danielle from the Office of Department of Child Services.
Who is the pastor that?
Mayor.
Who's the pastor that's on?
Uh, Pastor Steve Austin from uh, Grace First Superintendent Northland.
Oh, okay. Well covered. They're well covered. Okay, does that committee? I'm, I'm sorry I'm asking these questions. I just wasn't here last year. Okay. Does that committee, the J-RAC committee? Do you uh, give Rob then the information Rob has presented, is that primarily from the J-RAC committee or?
I sent that to Judge Conrad as well.
Okay.
There, there's not a subcommittee yet, right? So there's not quite yet a subcommittee that would make those recommendations, so that will go to the.
Okay.
Just a reminder, I don't wanna borrow problems from tomorrow. We don't intend to come ask for one twenty-five next year. So I think most of the commissioners, minus Doug, and Doug and I met, I think shortly.
I think we did.
Like we did intend, all wanted to ask for year two. We knew we would need year one to get started. We knew, we knew we would need another year to even think about anything sustainable. But what I would hope is that moving forward, the county would, would make a contribution, but that will be to a point where it would look a lot more balanced than it does right now.
Okay, so for year two, a hundred and twenty-five thousand, how much opiate money is going to make up this hundred and twenty-five thousand?
If the fund has enough, the J-RAC. Moves to make that nomination, all of it would come from opiate for next year. But what Ian was talking about, in the future, the, the opiate fund was front-loaded. First couple of years, there was a lot of money put into it. And then as the years go on, less and less money gets put into that fund from the, the settlement. So that's why Ian's saying, future use, this cannot support these type of donations. Uh, but Ian, am I wrong looking at this? That if. The J-RAC puts it to where this is the one nomination or whatever, there's, there's a hundred and twenty-five thousand in that fund for this, for twenty-twenty-six. Am I correct on that statement?
Hundred and thirty-eight.
Yeah, so there's a hundred and thirty-eight thousand that could be used for this next grant cycle.
Right.
And then it's just what the uh, J-RAC brings to you guys as a recommendation.
Twenty, twenty-two, twenty-two seven, there's some concerns out there.
So the J-RAC committee, right, the whole idea behind J-RAC is to get all of the stakeholders in the county in the same room to discuss our system of justice. From the point where law enforcement is first called, all the way to the end, right? And so that's, that's why you hear all those various stakeholders in our county that are part of this J-RAC. So when we're sitting together, we're talking about how the child, who is the, who is the child of two parents who are no longer in the home cuz they're incarcerated, where does the kid go, right? So DCS is involved. I mean, we're looking at the broader picture of what system of justice do we have in our county? And so we, we did studies a couple of years ago to look at where are the gaps in our community, where can we improve? And part of that was housing, transportation, navigators in jail. This organization fills a lot of those holes. And so I get a hundred and twenty-five thousand is a lot. They've also matched it. Private, private. In my view, a hundred and twenty-five thousand is a, is a good investment when you look at all they're doing. Providing transportation when somebody needs rehab, you know. In the army, I had a first sergeant that would take the person to treatment that they needed to go and come back. You have Big Brother coming down and just handling people. As a community, where are those gaps being filled? And this group happens to be doing a lot of it. Now, is there another group that's gonna come along and do just as good, different? Maybe. Is that likely in Adams County? I mean, you can assess the probability of that or not. You haven't had it in a while until Rob and his team came along and provided those services. Uh, and you know, last thing, you know, a lot of folks will say, you know, hey, this is, this is uh, helping, why do criminals need help, right? Well, it's been my experience that people have that opinion until their son needs help, right? Then they want the best defense attorney they can find, right? Then they want all the services that they can find, right? As a broader picture of how our community treats these folks. What they're providing is a pretty good deal.
I, I don't disagree with you, Judge. I think, I, my hat's off to the, the committee and certainly the people that's working. I guess my concern is in twenty-twenty-seven. Uh, I heard you say there was, uh, assuming that you're going to drum up a hun, a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars from donors and community, et cetera, et cetera. And I, I think I heard Ian say that, that it may be down to thirty-eight thousand next year, which then means we're. We're void eighty thousand dollars looking at twenty-seven. And my question is, what do we need to be thinking about at the county level to drum up eighty thousand dollars? Because if we don't put it in, if, if, if we're not going to do it through the sheriff's budget, that'd be nice sheriff. Or if we're not gonna do it through a commissioner's budget, then we better have some answers for that eighty thousand dollars when September happens. Right, Tony?
I, I think what I heard Rob say was that they, they won't come to us for a hundred and twenty-five thousand next year. So knowing that our, our funds will, our, our ongoing funds are limited. Fortunately, we have some carry forward from the initial large amount of funding that we got year one. We still have money in the bank, money in the account where we could do this. I guess my, a, a, and I appreciate having Judge and a prosecutor and Ian here. We've got sheriff here, we've got solid representation. I would like for this to go back to that. J-RAC committee and the subcommittee that's gonna help us with the distribution of these opioid settlement funds. Um, and if this is the recommendation that comes to us, and if the recommendation is that we fund a hundred and twenty-five thousand of this. Out of the either restricted or unrestricted or a combination of both. Makes all the sense in the world to me and I love what you're trying to do. I personally have experienced that lack of support that uh, an individual has when they exit. If either it's our local jail or they exit a, a state penitentiary. And had it not been for um. Friends and family to help them reengage in the community in a positive way, you'd have been right back in prison. Fortunately for him, he had a, a, a safety net that he could rely on. Many don't. And so there's where I, I know the role you're playing is critical in the lives of those. Fifty, sixty, seventy folks, a hundred folks, as I'm looking at the numbers here, that you've touched this year. So I, I believe in the program. I believe there's a need. I believe that it deserves our focus. But I think we're committed to having these funds be distributed in a, in a, in a thoughtful process. And so I don't wanna kind of jump out of the, out of, out of the process that we've set up. I love what you're doing. Got my personal support. Um, I don't know that I'm willing to say we're gonna write a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollar check out of opioid, either restricted or unrestricted funds. But I'd like to see that, a recommendation come from. That committee, yep, this is your best investment and, or even if it's not a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. Maybe it's a hundred thousand, maybe seventy-five thousand. Then it's up to us to figure out where we're gonna, if we're gonna find, or we're gonna find that additional money at.
So I, I think Steve, I, I, I did everything you said. I would just ask the J-RAC committee to uh. Vision as much as you can ahead and give us some warning as to what is gonna be expected.
The other thing regarding that, gentlemen, as Ian and I have struggled with since this first came out, restricted versus unrestricted. There, it literally means that there are only certain uses that you could spend out of one of those funds. And you could spend more out of the other, and I always get mixed up which is which. I think it's the higher amount that is more restricted than the lower amount. Am I correct?
Well, it is, but with our balance, it's. Quite a bit of money in the unrestricted.
And I'm assuming this fits well within that restricted. This is right what those restricted funds, in my mind. I, I, I'm a restricted and unrestricted. These funds were set up to help. Individuals who've been, who've been negatively influenced by that, the opioid and, and drug abuse. And to me, what you're trying to do is, is a, a, an ideal candidate for use of those funds. I just don't feel comfortable personally saying, yep, you're the best candidate and you're gonna get them all. I would rather folks with a lot more knowledge than me kind of assess the options and say, here's our recommendation. And, and then, and then we can bless it.
Steve, let me interject, just so, just so we're on the same page. I normally, I think that's the route we, we understand why that committee exists. I'm a part of that group.
Right.
The only reason I decided like, hey, we should get in front of commissioners first is because I knew that enough money didn't get released to pay it. So I thought, you know, I'll give this to you first and then we'll trust the.
Well, and you know, I, I, again, I would go back to those guys and say, if we didn't, if we didn't fund enough. If this is truly a kind of a, a one year, we gotta, we gotta gut this out one more year and then they'll kind of be off on their own. When we looked at that hundred thousand dollars, in my mind, it was kind of like, well, we need to spread this out over the next four or five years. Uh, let's not shoot ourselves in the foot here. If that was not, if that was a mistake, you guys come tell us that was a mistake.
Steve, something I wanna point out, last year in September, uh. You approved a hundred and twenty-five thousand for Project Connect. You also approved an additional almost thirty-seven thousand. That was to be granted to behavioral health schools and crossroads. To date. Twenty-seven thousand, three hundred and twenty-three dollars, ninety-five cents has not been claimed by those entities. So there's a balance there, but we never thought, we need to set a deadline to when these. Grants need to be spent.
Come get their money.
So that's a, yeah, so we need to decide, or you, I guess, need to decide, you know, is there a, is there a mandate that you wanna say? Submit your claim for these funds or it's getting rolled over because really that balance is twenty-seven thousand less than what you see on paper. Because that's money that you said.
We've committed, just hadn't spent.
I think, you know, the good thing, Steve, for us is stands on the committee. And keep us informed, committee, and I.
Don't make yourself strangers. What you're trying to do is so critical to our county, the success of every resident of our county. Um, don't feel like you only have to come to us when you're, when you need money. Help us understand and, and buy into the program and feed us little bits once in a while where your successes are and, and I, I love it. I love hearing about what you're doing. I love, obviously, these guys are seeing it every day. I fortunately don't see it every day. And so I, but I need to see it often enough to remind myself how important what you're doing is.
Jeremy, you probably got other obligations. Go ahead.
This, this is in large part, just, and it's just so you know, from my perspective, I'm being free. I've been at this moment now that I get to serve as special prosecutor in Huntington County, Wells County, Jay County, Cal County, Osasuna County. There may be a few others. I can tell you, and I say this to every, and I've said this to prosecutors in those counties. When you combine the collaboration that we have, which is very unique and ensure you, between DCS, probation, community corrections and these guys. We're better. We're flat out better. And I just thought you should know that. I mean, I'm not here to support and say things that are. And I'm not blowing sunshine up anyone's rear end. Ian didn't know I was gonna say this, but when, when you compare our community corrections.
Ian didn't know I was going to say this, but when, when you compare our community corrections and our probation and then add these guys from Project Connect in it, we're way better. And there's a, and there's a, I can tell you, and I can potentially bring you some results, and maybe you guys need to see that, and that's fair. To say, what are you guys doing and how, how are we better? But the money you've invested, I can assure you, there have been so many times I'm in another county thinking, I wish I had our folks. And that even includes, as much as it pains me to say this, our sheriff. He will call, I mean, he will call me and, and, and express concern about an inmate and what can we do? You know what? I'm proud of them. We can be hard and we can throw fastballs at people when they have it coming, but we're not a bunch of, you know, closed-minded Neanderthals out there. And this staff, I, I, I just think you guys should know that we got some really damn good people out there. And this group helps to avoid that those I may not be here at the next meeting, but I just wanted you to know that. I, I very much appreciate it, and I can tell you how they can care to other counties and it's not even close.
So you know, we, just another plus for the sheriff since he, we're a little, we're really going to say good things, Sheriff. And he recently had a baptism in the jail. How often does that happen? Or where else does it happen?
I mean.
Right?
Good. Jeremy, thanks.
Thanks.
Appreciate you being here.
If you guys don't mind, I've got just a few sentences and I'll just, I'll
Sure.
That's all I've got. Uh, just my closing, I'm just going to read the closing portion. Uh, we don't believe that Project Connect is in any longer a pilot. It's a functional county asset. Adams County is modeling what justice reinvestment looks like. And when handled locally, renewal allows momentum, consistency, and continued movement towards dissident, assistance, dignity, and community stability. Residual benefits of Project Connect at no cost to the county are wraparound contracts to vulnerable communities such as Village Green and Chase Point. Emergency housing, in which we hope to have two apartments by the end of the year, we've already got the deal locked in. Um, support for not-for-profit judicial and social, social service partners and the people that they serve, including the prosecutor's office, community corrections, like we are here to serve our community and our assets. Um, and food instability, which I think is going to continue to be an issue that's coming here. Um, so I, I would just say that we're doing far above and beyond what I think the county has paid for. Like, and the reason we're doing that is not to make us seem awesome. The reason we're doing that is because we love Adams County. We all live here. Like, I moved back here intentionally. I uprooted my family and came back here and built a house. Like, that is my level of commitment to Adams County. Uh, and I'm, I'm not, there's no signs of slowing for twenty twenty-six.
Good.
I think it's interesting, this is my fifteenth year in county government. We have been looking for this program as long as I can remember. We have been looking for housing, for rehabilitation programs as long as I can remember. So I, I will definitely continue to support.
And I appreciate Stan being on the committee, thanks.
Your, your open house. I saw your, I saw yours. I, I, I didn't even know you were in what I refer to as the old Rice Hotel.
Yeah.
I didn't even know you were there. Oh, you've been there? What, what are you, what's, is that where your offices are? What's going on there?
And we've continued to expand. We started with a small experience, now we took the back portion, we've taken on two emergency houses. We just got our sign and we've been there for several months.
I just drove by it last night, I thought, wait!
I was really glad it was done.
And as far as seeing what we do, we want to invite you to come to our open house and know the break. You guys got flyers for that. It's going to be, I mean, we're going to be having testimonies there. People who we've helped be having, um, we're also going to be doing a volunteer drive to just continue to, to support the community in that way.
As, as far as, you know, I, I, I have no idea, and these guys are probably telling, Ian probably telling me what the, the value is to, to keeping one person from ending up back in the jail. Um, from a, from a county resource perspective, from an investment, return on investment, I'm sure we're getting ten to one. Of what we're investing in.
We could do a real-life comparison.
What's our, what's our cost per day? Fifty-some bucks?
For inmate?
To keep a person in jail?
About seventy-six dollars today.
Seventy-six?
What I was thinking, we could do it in real life, and you could just figure out what I have cost the county, my previous, like, and then we calculate out what I've saved the county. And we hope it's a lot.
You're about water now?
Hey, thank you so much for the time. I appreciate your leadership.
Thanks for coming in. Yeah, brief us now and then, okay? We, I have a thing, you forget.
Sheriff.
Yeah, I'm not leaving.
What's your last? Sheriff.
Just, just real quick, uh, we say, but has there been a full year that we've been operating yet, uh, inside the jail by the time they got up and rolling? Um, it's growing pains with my staff and stuff too, because this is new for us. And the change that, the collaboration between their group and my staff is noticeable. Um, we have to change our way of thinking too. And it's hard, uh, we, we bump heads, but it, it's happening. Uh, our discipline has gone down, um, the morale has gone up. Um, so there's a change that way inside the jail. Um, as far as the financing, uh, I, Rob's been to Dearborn County, K County, the other places that are doing it on their own that did not go with the state money. And those counties have invested, not even Oprah money, it's a budgetary line for things. And I want to, and I'll stress this to council too, it's something that we need to do.
That's what I'm thinking, you're, I, I, I agree.
It's a return. Um, the money that I bring in from federal prison or stuff like that, there's money coming in that just goes into county general that, and like I said, he's hoping not asking for this, but if we can bu- budget fifty thousand dollars every year or something like that in the budget, that's something that I'm hopeful for. As long as what I see happening continues, which I don't know why it won't, it's a huge return for us. Um, and it's not, they can focus on other things instead of coming here asking us. And then other resources can go after that Oprah money and things like that too. So, um, it's just been a huge difference. Um, we are training, like you said, we've had a baptism. Uh, one of the speakers coming, um, the eighth is going to be somebody who's incarcerated. We're going to transport them over there so people can see that. Uh, that's, that's not normal for us. And my staff struggles with me saying, I want to do this.
I, I, I could see the, the, the difference they could make in your perspective on your responsibilities as opposed to just containment. We keep them locked up, we keep them safe until we turn them back loose on society again versus whatever the right word is. Yes.
Yes, because that, that, you can see in some of the inmates, they're, they are changing, they're doing MRT.
Well, I can see, I can see changing your staff too. You mentioned your staff.
It is.
Staff has a different
But then they will fall back and then we, 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 it's, it's ongoing with the staffing and ongoing with the inmates. But it's just something that I will talk to council too. This is something that the county needs to invest in budgetarily. Um, because it is a help, uh, yeah, in all aspects, inside and then going out, then like you said, hopefully they don't ever come back.
Yeah.
So, um, but is it always peaches and creams? No, it's not. We have growing pains.
Sure.
Uh, but we're working through those. Uh, these, this, this group is a great group to talk to. We meet bi-weekly now, uh, so we don't let things build up and boil over. So, uh, we're learning, they're learning, we're learning. But it's an investment that as long as, we got to give them the fair chance, and that's why I strongly support financially the Oprah money. Uh, get them two years on the belt, then they can bring data back to us, show you that it's working. And then hopefully budgetary, we can start kicking in. They'll get more private side stuff too, which he's doing a great job. He should sell cars, um, really should. He, he could be at the Cadillac, they were making a lot more money than what he's making here.
One thing that you're overlooking is the fact that you've been a great leader in this regard.
Well.
The leadership's going to change at the end of twenty-six.
But
And we need, we need continued group support.
But hopefully with who is going to be there, it will be, uh, there's no doubt about that. So, uh, but it's just, we got to give them the time to show you that it's working. It is working, we just don't have all the data yet because it's so new. I mean, you guys really didn't get, start rolling until what, March?
Yeah.
We were in there.
We were in there.
But like classes and groups.
Correct. February was, March was probably the real, like, okay, we're doing it.
Yeah, so it, it's working, um, and like I said, I'm beating the dead horse, but long-term, we didn't make this a budgetary issue. Because the other jails that have been doing this, doing this for five, six years, that's where it's gone to, because they've seen the benefits of the program.
I, I, I'm always hesitant to start something just on, um, on grant funding that has that long-term viability.
It's not a bad way to start.
I, I think, I think ultimately we have to decide, and maybe we've decided already, if this is a program that we're going to keep regardless at the grant. And so that's, and that's what you're asking us to
Yeah, because like I said, let's, let's support them their second year, then at that point it gives us time as a, as a county saying, okay, this is what we're going to, this is how we're going to do it, and we can talk about it. But we'll come back with J-Rac recommendations to you, there's no doubt about that. Uh, but like I said, it's working, it's just, it's, we're in the infant stage. We need to let it grow to that adolescent stage where you can see the benefit of it.
One, one of the things that we, when, when you start a program, you set a precedent. And when you start a program, it's difficult to objectively evaluate that program. And if it's not working, it's difficult to say, no. So to Ian's point, you know, some of the money that was awarded last year, did they not even use it? You know, so how do we evaluate what happened with that money that was awarded? And so I think there has to be, if we're really being objective, there has to be some kind of evaluation, whether it's on an annual basis or however it is, you know, because, you know, once you start a program, it's real difficult to evaluate and make sure that it's doing what you want, without just something. But like, you know, Ian's program, he's got the benefit of state grant funds because he has an excellent program. And, and he scores high on, on the state evaluations. And, and that's a huge benefit. You know, in a program like this, I'm not saying go get state grant fund, but you know, I, I think it's, it's an excellent program that's going to have benefits above the cost.
I, I would encourage all the commissioners, if you have a chance to read what I wrote this morning, um, there's some indication in there and why I want to be cautious about taking any funding outside of, outside of three dollars.
Yeah, and I'm not saying go for state.
Because they just keep cutting and cutting.
Yeah.
But that's all I think.
Thank you, thanks, Sheriff. Thanks, everybody. Appreciate you being here.
You had a wild, you read up there, could you send that email to Tony?
Moving on, Shelley, what have you got for us this morning?
Take it outside. Yeah.
Pass that, Jeremy.
Sorry, guys.
I request. Responses are basically short.
Very good.
Sorry about that. Mark about getting all our precincts looking good. Bear with me, I have a cold.
Don't get your huts.
This will be easy.
Yeah, just don't breathe.
Um, no, this should have been done in twenty-three, but I didn't get the, um, cities of Decatur's ordinance until too late. So then we couldn't work on it in twenty-three. Um, and then twenty-four, there was no precinct changes due to the presidential election. So back in February of this year, I tried to get on the list for the state. They finally got back with me most recently. This is just the lake shores, uh, annexation. Um, I don't think there's any houses built yet, to be honest with you. But this is that subs, that section that they, um, it was in North Washington, it's just moving right into Decatur one.
Back by the woods or?
Yeah, what, yeah. Basically, and I can show you the, actually, this is the draft or the order and then the map. At will. It's actually already on the G I S reflecting as such. So it was like over here was what was incorporated for Decatur. So this was, this part was in Decatur, or North Washington. So that's what's included.
The blue part or the yellow part?
Uh, the Decatur, yeah, this was, this is North Washington. So this was all in North Washington. Now it's all in Decatur one.
Got it.
I just need your order or assigned order stating as such, you guys.
Can you be sent you a copy of this as well?
Actually, I'd like to take the draft off, I got one without the draft.
Oh, you got one without the draft?
Can you tell I used to work at a lumber?
We need a motion to this effect.
We, we would, yes.
I, I moved that, uh, chairman signed the necessary document for Shelley's, uh, transfer of whatever voting.
There you go. Annexation. Can you send me a copy of that?
Yep. Well, I need your test.
I'll, I'll send it there.
That's all right.
And, and the reason this makes sense is because it was annexed in the city, right?
Correct.
That's your
Yes.
That's, that's what, that was your trigger
Yes.
To make this happen.
Yes.
Just want to make sure that I understood what was
An annexation in the county, we got to make sure that they let us know.
Well, thanks for staying on top of it. We all
It's an amazing decision.
Yeah.
Yeah, and I talked to Shelley, we're going to, at some point here, want to re, restate our entire countywide precinct ordinance because there's been so many changes over the years. Back in two thousand and seven, we did kind of a comprehensive restatement. And since then, we've had incremental changes. Be nice to restate it so that we have one ordinance and one set of maps to look at.
Sure.
But we can do that, we'll do that after the state approves this.
Very good. Anything else for Shelley?
I don't.
Anything else for Shelley, guys, before we move on?
Send me any of your copy.
Okay. Let's all send you the whole thing. Hey, Mark, whenever you want to meet.
Yep.
Oh, Megan. It's Lou for Mark, I thought.
Thank you.
Wait, Megan's back there. I bet there's a reason she's here.
He is, double booked with inspections.
Okay.
How many you got?
Three. So the first one is Bolmar subdivision. It is up off of Minnick Road and twelve hundred north to the county line. And they are just splitting out the
Buildings.
Buildings from the farm ground. Those are just two lots.
One.
So there's going to be sixty-three acres left. Right. I moved if we accept it, Bolmar.
Okay. Okay, motion passes. Motion by Doug, second by Stan.
So yeah, I got spelled on this, I guess. Oh, you have a Y, spelled Y here.
The Y is done, let's get along.
That's right.
The next one is a replant of a subdivision. Um, they came in a couple of months ago, split out lot one, now they're coming back, getting a second sub, or a second lot. So the entire subdivision will have three lots, but right now we're just leaving out two.
How do they get access to that, Chris?
They have a easement coming down.
So if they come back in again, they're done, right?
Correct.
I move we accept. Benjamin Ford.
Unless we do that, we're just an easement, I mean, I guess so. Okay, well, second.
Yeah, if they want to split again, then it has to go major subdivision, which fires the res.
Yeah. Yeah.
Yeah, a little more difficult.
Right. More people's opinions.
That was my home, I decided there. Yep.
I think she sent a copy to
Yeah. Who's got that now?
Oh, leaked, he just bought it.
It's like Luke, Luke, pink.
Luke leaked, he just bought it.
Yeah.
The next one.
I think there's a Y for
How so?
Yeah, maybe, maybe.
It's a little bit of an awkward subdivision to begin with because this little area was already knocked out of it. So it's going into three. You're going to have, um, the buildings in the center, there's going to be one lot. South of that will be another lot, and then the rest will be the third.
Yikes. It's interesting.
Yeah.
What's this here in the center?
It's, um, Road Eugene has it, so I'm guessing for the woods. I'm guessing for the woods.
Yep, yep, I suppose. Okay, what do you think, guys?
You don't have a problem with it.
Hey, is that a motion? Motion by Doug, second by Stan.
I need a new pen.
Yeah, it's running out.
Sail Road at one fifty, one fifty north.
All right, thank you, guys.
About three hundred, three hundred and sixty acres or. Bought all, but there was a twenty forty piece, it was kinda cut off by a creek. Amish bought that, Luke bought the rest of it.
Hefty purchase. Yeah, he's a, wanna put up a. Fancy flash operation in Los County, I think, yeah.
Mark, what have you got for us?
Uh, we got a couple appointments to the property tax assessment board of appeals. Checking to see here, right now, we, we've got a three-member board, and those four, those members are appointed annually. Believe we may need to change that to staggered terms. But at least for now, we'll reappoint the members that we have, and then we're gonna look at the staggered terms here before the end of the year. We need an appointment here for Rex King. As a member to the property tax assessment board of appeals for January one through the end of um. January, or through the end of twenty twenty-six. And then also Max Beer, um, as a member, January one through the end of twenty-six. And then um, I'm looking at the statute here right now to see. About staggering of the term.
We just need to reappoint Rex and Max.
Rex and Max right now. Rex King, Max Beer points the next one at their beginning.
Okay, I have no problem with it, but. Quite a few appointments now, and you, you can make appointments at beginning of the year. But you want these now?
We'll do these now, and then just a one year, and then we'll see about the staggered.
I move uh, that uh, I may, I, I, I move that we uh, accept March recommendation on these two appointments.
I'll second Stan, except motion passes, motion by Doug, second by Stan.
I think Rex was township assessor.
Now I served with him for years on A C school board. What else have you got for us, Mark?
Um, I just had that thing with Shelley, and that's it for today.
Shannon, what have you got for us?
Um, just as a friendly reminder, um, that the health fair is on Thursday at the hospital, so we're gonna be doing bloodwork. And that's when open enrollment starts for nine year twenty twenty-six. Um, and so on that same kinda line, we've been talking about our pharmacy benefit manager for the last several months. And what that looks like, what that relationship looks like, um, so you guys have. Uh, been presented with the idea of changing our P V M from C V S Caremark to Northwind. That is an independent P V M based out of Indianapolis. Um, so if that's something that you guys are interested in doing in twenty twenty-six, I just wanted to give you the opportunity to discuss it today.
Any, any progress on the negotiations?
The results of that conversation was that Allied has agreed to come down on their one-time fee of, uh, by twenty-five hundred dollars. And Northwind has agreed to increase their contribution by fifteen hundred, so that would put us at needing to spend five thousand upfront. Versus fifteen and six thousand, which is what. So we saved a little bit, uh, but that's the best that they said that they can do.
You have to twist their arm a little bit.
I did not, but.
Do you feel that, you feel that um, that the additional funds you're. Spend would be justified?
I do, even without the cost savings factored into it, I've always felt like um, Northwind's transparency. When it comes to what we're charged, what our rebates are, access to our information, things like that, is worth. You know, whatever additional costs we might have, but then you do have the cost savings of our claims factored into it, um, so I think it's.
And that would be for a year at a time, is that?
So one year.
Wasn't Allied a little bit reluctant though to?
They were.
To go with Northwind? But they're okay with it now?
I mean, I, I don't think that they've never not been okay with it, but they, in my opinion, not having been in the room, obviously, such that they dragged their feet. Um, and obviously, that relationship on our plan would be severed if we were to choose a different P V M.
How, how much time do we have before we need, have to make a decision on this?
By the time that you adjourn today.
Twenty minutes. In other words, right now.
Okay, well, that's uh. I guess, I guess I'm going to put my trust in, in, in Shannon, uh, she said the extra money spent's worth it. So in that regard, I guess I'm, that's the only basis of my decision.
Well, yeah, I have to appreciate the recommendation and, and applaud the negotiation, and, and I would second that for sure.
Okay, well, make it a motion then.
Yep, sounds like a motion and a second to me.
For twenty twenty-six, so I will let them know if they can get, get working on that. Um, the only thing that I wanted to discuss slash bring up was if you guys wanted to consider the um, employer contribution of the four fifty-seven B at all for next year. Um, I got the plan agreements put together, I sent them over last week later than I should have to Mark's office to be reviewed. Um, but it would just obviously take an approval from you guys, and then a signature on the plan agreements to update.
Totally agreed, we're not going to have a, an increase, right? Is that what we agreed on a couple weeks ago?
No, we're talking about employer contribution, so our contribution to the four oh three. And, and right now we contribute fifteen, and we've talked about moving that to twenty-five. And, and council agreed to have that in the budget. But we just have to agree to make that change, you know, we debated that pretty heavily over the last month or so. I guess it's time to make the decision.
And it doesn't have to be today, but with keeping in mind that the health fair is on Thursday. Normally, the deferred comp is listed on that one sheet that I pass out at the health fair, so. I mean, if I was gonna announce it on Thursday, it would be helpful, but it's not necessary.
And, and you said that increase would be relative to somewhere around a, a one percent increase and.
I did not make that.
I think I did that calculation, Stan, so don't, don't, don't blame that on Shannon, blame it, blame me. I was just gonna run those numbers again, ten dollars a pay period. Times twenty-six, it's two hundred and sixty dollars divided by.
Two thousand and eighty is the number of full-time working hours a year.
But that doesn't mean everyone's gonna take advantage of it.
So that's twelve and a half, twelve and a half cents an hour.
And how much can the employee contribute to that?
They can contribute up to the annual limit set by the I R S, which I believe for, um, somebody up here in the age of fifty is seventy-four hundred.
But doesn't necessarily affect the employee other than the employer is getting more.
Well, the employee would have to increase their own contribution in order to earn the additional.
To at least twenty-five.
Well, I'm always, I'm always for, if the councils live along with it, and Stephen Stan agreed. I'm always for um, trying to give our employees. An extra whatever, and this sounds like it is, an extra, if they contribute. So with, with that being said, I, I'm for, so I'm, but I'm not making a motion till, till you guys decide. If that's the way you wanna go.
What's your thoughts, Stephen?
I, I'm okay with it, I. You know, I think uh, Doug continues to make the point that we, we attract and retain employees. Based upon our, our, our scheduled employee benefits. Um, and so I think this just enhances that, uh, and, and like I've said, I, I. I trust that Shannon will make it pay for us, and then we'll, we'll, she'll use that to uh, to lever that with. A, a uh, a, a better workforce. That's kind of her role as H R directors, take those benefits and make sure that we get, we get the recognition that we deserve for that benefit package.
Yeah, that's kinda always the thing of people, if employees know about their benefits and appreciate them. I think that's great, cause if they don't know about it, then we're just leaving money on the table, so.
And I think Shannon's agreed that this year we're gonna do a um, a, a full. Toll reward statement, which is gonna, I've seen those before, they're pretty impactful. Um, lots of, lots of times, employees don't understand exactly what our cost is for the health insurance plan we provide and. The other benefits that we provide, and it's, if we could put that in writing in dollars and cents, I think that'll be helpful.
I'm gonna add on to, to my initial statement, I, I, I like, I like giving employees. A nudge in the right direction, if they take some action to help themselves, and this, and this one, it will require some action on their own to increase. So, I'll, with that being said, it sounds to me like.
Uh, I'll make the motion that we increase our county's uh, contribution. From fifteen dollars to twenty-five dollars for the four oh three B.
I'll second.
Thank you, um, I will bring you B D adoption agreements after they can be sent out the next couple weeks, but it will be till January first, this goes into effect. It just gets me quite in right.
Good deal, you've been after that for how many years now? I, no, I thought you brought that recommendation to us, at least a year, I, uh, maybe.
If they can sign right up on Thursday.
Is it the, is it this nationwide uh, governmental four fifty-seven B adoption agreement?
Yes, but I'm not ready.
Okay, yeah, I, I, there's a number of places in here that, I mean, it's thirty-four pages long. But, so they would adopt thi- this with nationwide, and then also the state of Indiana. Uh, adoption agreement, two, two to adopt, alright, so it looks like in this section six. Shannon under section, section six.
Shannon, is that all you have for us then? Anything from the public? Ian, you've been saying it very patiently, we've talked about a lot of stuff, kinda talked around some of your stuff today, thoughts you wanna share with us?
I just wanted to go back to. We, I think you need to decide if there's gonna be a hard deadline for North Adams. And Crossroads to submit a claim for the money that was awarded to them last September, because we've never dealt with that. We didn't think that, boy, they wouldn't do it, but this is a reason why we don't just give them the money, because. Obviously, a year later, over a year later, they haven't asked for it, then they didn't need it. And you know, so, and, and I don't have a problem sending an email saying you have until this date to submit a claim for the money that you were granted, or it's going to roll back over into.
I would think if they haven't claimed it by the end of the, by the end of the calendar year that it was granted in, that it probably ought to roll back into. And make it available for somebody that does need it.
Aren't they worthy of another reminder?
Well, I think the pride, we, I would probably give them a reminder, but.
So the end of, it sounds like Steve's, the end of the year, I'm okay with that.
And, and I think moving forwards, as we push this process back a little bit. Next, next year's grants will start in January, and so that makes a calendar year is a, a pretty.
Okay, thanks.
Does it always start like in Jan, like? Here's my question, if somebody comes in November, and they have till the end of that calendar year. That's a little different than in January, and my other question to Mark is. Do we need to make a motion and make this official in the minutes, they're going to put a timeline on requests that are granted through opioid revenues? Does that need to be in the minutes?
Uh, if you're imposing a timeline on this previous grant, then yeah, I think you wanna have that in the minutes, and going forward, then it's up to you whether you impose.
Twenty-seven and some change.
So if you give them a reminder, and they come, and they come through with. With a plan to spend it, is that okay, or are you asking that the deadline is a spend by then?
The, the agreement was is that they have to provide us with an invoice for what they're asking for, so.
So they've only got, they've only got two months.
North Adams, North Adams has like twenty, twenty-one thousand dollars that we awarded to them to start a DARA program. Well, I've heard that the DARA program is up and running, we were hoping, we were going to help pay for the training of that, but they just never. To, to pay for it, so, and I, I know Crossroads reached out to me yesterday wanting to know more, as well as far as. What do they need to do, so they just need to simply provide us with an invoice, and then I'll get it to Tony and, and I'll get.
Let's see what happens by uh, one one.
Here's a, I've got a motion here worded, if one of you wanna make a motion, and you, you guys know it just sounds okay. Upon a motion by one of you and second by the other, to allow a calendar year to spend revenues granted in the application process for opioid revenues. Granted by the commissioners following J RAC approval.
I'd say confirm program implementation and invoice.
Alright, thank you.
Thanks Ian. What do you say to confirm?
Confirm program implementation and invoice. So they're telling us, yes.
Yep, I did it, and here's, here's, here's my invoice.
We're doing it, here's the invoice.
Good. Anything else, Sheriff?
Just need to, uh, I sent out everybody and Tony a copy of the twenty twenty-five state jail inspection. I just need to publicly put this in. Submit to you guys.
Good, big completed?
It's been completed, uh, it's completed about the same time every year, uh, but it's something they're pushing. Uh, council, commissioners, and any judicial officer that covers any type of criminal, so juvenile and adult. The judges have received their copies of, I'm doing yours, and above me, and I'll do council in November.
So we need to make a motion that.
Just admit it into the record, that's all.
Yep, the twenty twenty-five Adams County Jail Inspection Report.
Can you read it to us?
I can, there's no pictures, no standing.
You can read that in the.
You've always passed, haven't you?
Yes, we, we, we've had no violations, uh, we are in very good, good shape.
That E O C does that?
Correct, yeah, they, they inspect every facility in the state, once a year. And actually, I think I will probably send it to the clerk also, so it'll be record, the public record, everybody wants to see it, so. I'll get that sent over to the clerk's office too today.
Does this need sign?
And it's also available on the D O C website too, so. And I will email a copy to the clerk's office, so they have it on record also. No, has nothing to do with that, um, I'm sure the Fed, look at it, but the Fed does an actual inspection also. Uh, yes, the U S Marshals are doing inspection, this is required by state statute. So totally two different things.
What's our reimbursement for, for uh, D O C prisoners right?
Right now, it is forty, let's see, what's thirty, I believe it's forty-two dollars a day.
What do you figure it costs to house them?
That's for D O C?
That's Indiana D O C, we did a study, and the average for uh, jail in Indiana is seventy-six dollars a day.
So we're only losing thirty-four dollars.
And the D O C admits that that costs them about eighty-six dollars a day. Uh, my federal reimbursements, I believe eighty-five dollars a day. And the state just set a contract with the D O C, I'm sorry, the D O C set a contract with the federal government. For the Miami Correctional Facility to do ICE detentions at two hundred and ninety-four dollars a day. But we are now housing anywhere from twelve hundred to fifteen hundred prisoners in our local jails that have been sent to the D O C. But they don't have the space. It's for a thousand beds. But they're gonna build the feds two hundred and ninety-four dollars a day.
Are they sending them to Camp Attaberry and stuff like that?
Uh, no, they're, they're sending them, they're, they're upgrading the facility in Wabash County. Or no, not, no, not Wabash County, and uh, I think it's, I think it's the one, Miami County. Yeah.
They're doing such a great job.
But uh, they, they don't have space for ours, and I've talked to our legislators. And I brought that up to Mr. Holcomb, uh, a week and a half ago down in Indianapolis, when we went with the. And I brought that up to Mr. Holcomb, uh, a week and a half ago down in Indianapolis, when we went with the, uh, ICE, the head of ICE.
Mr. Brown?
No, no, the head of ICE, the federal ICE. And that's, that's why I wasn't here the last meeting. And, uh, uh, he couldn't believe that's what they were paying the state of Indiana. So, yeah, it, it's a source funds with, with sheriffs right now, for sure, especially the sheriffs that overcrowded.
I need a couple spare rooms in there.
Yeah, so.
We, we need a motion to accept this report, guys.
I, I move, we accept the show's report for the record.
Motion by Doug, second by Stan, that passes. Anything else in the public? Yeah, I entertain motion adjourned.